Down to nothing and was there for, I don't know, forty seconds.
I mean, it's in the air too.
And then you saw what started, now a bit of a sliver and...
Right. Let me speak to it a little bit to explain that it's nothing more than...
We're in the air.
All right, okay. Well, welcome folks this evening, and I will call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mary.
Bolson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kopczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Okay. I have a one letter to read to everyone plus a proclamation this evening. This is for Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2014. Whereas Albany is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Albany is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Albany is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Albany acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2014. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canop, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2014 to be Extra Mile Day. In the City of Albany, and I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and a world a better place. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed as 22nd day of October, 2014. Okay? And the next item, letter that I was going to read is, I made an error when it came to our 150th birthday celebration. I had received a letter from our Governor, John Kitzhopper, congratulating us on our 150th, and I was a little bit busy that day in helping to get things moving and get some food out that day for everyone, that I forgot to read the letter. So this is a letter from John Kitzhopper, our Governor, October 9th, 2014. Greetings. Congratulations on the Sesquon Sentinel of Albany, Oregon. This celebration is a fantastic opportunity to reflect on the history of your community and the people who made it what it is today. Albany's history began with the Kalapuyia, then settlers from the west in covered wagons. The arrival of the first train and the construction of the Long Wooden Railroad drawbridge in the late 1800s helped put Albany on the map as a leading manufacturing and transportation hub. Today Albany is home to both a collection of beautifully restored historic buildings and an urban renewal district that reflect the pride Albany citizens have in their past and excitement for the future. Please accept my best wishes for an enjoyable celebration and every success in the years ahead. Sincerely, John. A Kitzhopper, M.D., Governor. So that was very nice of him to send this letter. Evidently, a citizen had contacted him requesting a letter, and they sent it down just on the Friday before our celebration, and then I forgot to read it. So I want to thank the Governor for acknowledging our 150th. Okay. Next then on the agenda is business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening? I think, Bill, you said you had an item. Yes. Oh, and I also would like to acknowledge, first we have some Boy Scouts with us. And would you like to tell us what troop number you're from?
Troop 100.
Troop 100? Okay, I think you have attended before from that troop. So yes, thank you so much for attending. Thank you. Okay, Bill?
No, thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, my name is Bill Root, R-OT. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View in Albany. I wanted to thank the members of the council and the mayor for coming to our candidates' forum last night. It was well attended. We filled the room, and we had some interesting questions and answers, and I think it went Kind of in response to Sharon's proclamation, Saturday, November 1st, the North Albany Neighborhood Association is sponsoring a litter pickup from Spring Hill to Blossom on Highway 20, and also from the Circle to Seneca on Gibson Hill. Sign up will be from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the parking lot where Ray's used to be, and at the Gibson Hill Park. The items provided by SOLV will be rubber gloves, vests, and pickup tools, and also litter bags. That will be happening November 1st. November 18th, where there's a meeting for the North Albany Neighborhood Association that will be happening at Sidisi's Pizza Parlor, it'll start at 6:00. Miles Bredner, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his last name right.
Sorry.
He owns a piece of property at the intersection of Valley View and Crocker. It's a wooded section that he is going to donate to Benton County to be used to coordinate with the Benton County Park. He will be our guest speaker, as well as, he said he would bring somebody from Benton County, he didn't indicate who it would be, but anyway, somebody from the Parks Department for Benton County. That will be happening November 18th. It will be held at Sidisi's Pizza Parlor, and it will start at 6:00.
Which one?
Next item, Sunday, December 7th, it will be the Annual Toy Run. This will start at Walmart parking lot this year. The reason, because Kmart shut down. A lot of the bikers like to buy their toy the day of the toy run, and we wanted to provide that opportunity, so we're moving our venue to Walmart. Our parade route used to be just down Salem Avenue from Kmart, and was only a couple of miles. Well, this one is going to be totally different. We're going to start at the Walmart parking lot and go down Goldfish Farm Road to Knox Butte. We're down Knox Butte to Century Drive, turn up Century Drive and go to the Viewcrest Underpass, cross under the freeway, go to Salem Avenue. From Salem Avenue, we'll drive, parade through, Salem Avenue, clear to the Circle, go around the Circle on Main Street, go up Main Street to 7th Street, and we'll end up at the American Legion Post 10 headquarters. That is happening Sunday, December 7th, which is also Pearl Harbor Day. Of course, November 11th is going to be in there too. And that's it. Now invited everybody, that anyone is interested in going to our meeting, our Nana meeting, I think it should be very informative. I live, as a matter of fact, that wooded section is adjacent to my property, and so it's something that, I'm very happy that they're going to do that and leave that as a wooded area. Any questions?
Any questions, Bill? All right?
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Yep, thank you. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay. Right, so council, what we have is, one is a walk-in that's on the dais that we discussed a bit on Monday, and this would be over the marijuana ordinance that would be amending our existing ordinance, so...
And to further explain, it's a request of the Mayor and some of the council. I've written this ordinance, and all that it does is provide that if recreational marijuana sales are allowed, that it would be subject to the same locational restriction that the council has imposed with regard to medical marijuana. The idea was that it seemed illogical to require special locational restrictions for medical marijuana dispensaries if those rules were not carried forward in the event that recreational facilities are allowed. So with the Mayor's permission, I'll read the ordinance entitled.
Please read it.
This is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5833, to include sales of marijuana and marijuana-infused products within the locational restrictions applicable to medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time, entitled only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'm opposed.
Okay. So since we do have one opposition to it, then this will be brought forward, we would need to get this grandfathered in before the election if the recreational marijuana measure passes. So probably the work session that we have, you could add that to the agenda, and I think that's the third.
Well, if I may suggest, Mayor, I don't think you have that imperative. First of all, the recreational, the Measure 91, if it passes, will not be effective for 30 days after the vote, so an action at a regular council meeting will still precede the effective date of the state measure if it's adopted, and I'm not sure that there's really quite the same urgency to have this one done before that measure anyway. So I think you could do it at a regular meeting if you wish.
And we'd still be considered grandfathered in even before voting?
I'm not entirely, I don't really subscribe to the grandfathered in concept in this, but I think you would precede certainly the effective date of the ordinance, of the measure.
I don't believe there's a prohibition. Unlike the taxation issue, there is no prohibition that I'm aware of in the initiative, and I have looked at it a couple of times, about localities being able to restrict the location of commercial marijuana sales outlets. So I agree with Jim. I don't think there is any grandfathering issues to worry about.
Okay, good. There is other cities I've noticed that have followed what we have done by doing more in their zoning regulations. So I think Beaverton, Roseburg, which is good. Okay. With that, the next, it would be the second reading of the ordinance, and this would be for establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana.
This is an ordinance establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the City of Albany.
Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do with that item?
Approve.
Okay. All right, so there's been a motion, and a second to approve the ordinance, to adopt it, and discussion. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Roll call.
May I ask who made the motion?
I think Rich did. Bessie?
Motion, and now I'm doing a roll call to adopt that ordinance?
Yeah.
Bolson.
No.
Collins.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kellum.
Yes.
Kopczynski.
No.
Coburn.
No.
That's three to three.
Okay. And so with this, I am going to vote yes, but it's going to be also, like it on the record, that we bring this back next month after the election, and also we're going to be able to know more of the legalities of this. I fully agree with our city attorney on his interpretation over this law, but I think there's still a lot that we might find out within the next month, and mostly if it ends up passing, or if it fails, that I'd like us to bring the ordinance back in November and to see where we are at legality across the state, see what other communities have done, and whether we want to continue with the ordinance or repeal it, so... Okay? So with that, motion's carried four-three. Next is adoption of the resolution. This one's on page 10. And this would be over establishing tax rates for the sale of marijuana and medical marijuana. So counsel, what would you like to do on this one?
Well, I would say, we will, if you would note on this, that we will administratively fill in the chapters of the new ordinance that you've adopted. This resolution simply sets the rates for the tax, and it sets it at 10% for recreational sales basically, and it sets it at 0% for medical marijuana.
Do we even have to do it?
If you want to be able to impose the tax, you do.
Do we have to do it before?
You should. You don't want to create, if, you're operating under the assumption that by getting your tax ordinance in place, you will thereby gain a preemption over the prohibitions that are in Measure 91. In order to avoid creating a chink in the armor, you should adopt the resolution before...
Okay, move to approve.
And do we have permission then in the ordinance to administratively fill in these blanks to line up with the ordinance sections that were just adopted? In that motion?
In that motion, you do.
Thank you.
I second that.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Roll call.
This is for the resolution?
Yes.
No.
Collins.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kellum.
Yes.
Kopczynski.
No.
Coburn.
No.
Three to three.
Okay. And I will vote yes, four to three, and we'll still be revisiting this next month. Okay. That, next on the agenda is on page 12, and this is a resolution appropriating funds for the State Hazard Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. Doesn't look like there's staff here that wants to talk about it, or is there anything?
I think the staff report was pretty straightforward about what we're trying to do with this, and I regret, I thought we'd have someone here to speak to it. I'm sorry, we didn't, but if there's questions, I'll do my best.
Okay. Questions, counsel? Or entertain a motion?
Move adoption of resolution on page 12. Second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carry. Okay, next is adoption of the consent calendar, and if you'd like to have any items pulled off this evening, state that, or I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move for approval of the consent calendar. Is it appropriate to explain how consent calendars work for the audience tonight?
Yep, for our Boy Scouts on that. So consent calendar is usually a list of items that we have, and I don't know if you received a copy up by the door, there's a copy of our agenda if you're interested. So on the consent calendar is usually items that aren't so much controversial, they're just more standard routine type business, like adopting the minutes, you know, accepting the minutes, and certain, say like liquor license. So that is something that's usually not debated, and that's where we just made the motion and to not pull any items off for discussion on that. All right? Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carry. Okay. And next is a report. This one's on page 39, and this is adopting final findings of fact and conclusion regarding a telecommunications facility. Is there a part of this, should we have had any legal restrictions to read on this one? Or did we do that, and we should say that's going to move on?
You did it last time, and so that would be sufficient.
Okay. All right. Yep, Floyd?
I was not present at the last meeting with this, came back before the council, and there is additional testimony, and I have not reviewed the minutes, so I will not be voting unless necessary, as instructed by the city attorney.
Okay. All right. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
As you recall, at your last meeting where this was discussed, you made a tentative decision to support the application, and you directed staff to prepare findings and conclusions which would support that decision. Adoption of these findings and conclusions is the final step necessary to grant the approval.
Move for adoption of the final thing.
Second.
All right, there's a motion been made in a second. And Rich, you got a question?
Don't have a question. I just would renew my objection to a lack of willingness on the part of the people who are putting the tower up to make it something other than a stick sticking up in the sky, given the fact that while many of you have not seen all the other options, there's more than just a tree, or a whatever. There could be a 120-foot-tall clock tower like we have down here that says Albany down the side. I mean, all kinds of options, and I am opposed to a stick sticking up in the air being what I think is ugly.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Bob and Melissa's here also, if there's any. Okay, motion's been made in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. And with one, Epstein, right, with Lloyd. Okay.
Extinction.
Another walk-on this evening is...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Oops.
I think it might be good for you to announce the appeal period, which is...
Well, I asked Jim, and he said we did it last...
When you read the appeal right at the close of the hearing, do you have the, it's 21 days for the appeal, but we don't have the, we don't have the sheet here anyway to read the magic word, so we're going to have to go with what we said last time. And I'd also note for the record that there is no party present who appeared, is there anyone in the audience who appeared on that matter previously at the last meeting? There would really be no one who would have standing to make an objection then anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Nikos does not?
He's not, he did not appear at the last, he's not here.
When the guy said that he wasn't here, and that showed that he didn't mind, the guy wasn't telling the truth.
What I'm trying to say is...
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. The next item that was, I mentioned it would be walked on this evening, is what I handed out on Monday, and that was the resolution supporting the Lead Benton Community College bond measure. Did everybody bring that resolution with you? And is there any thoughts, questions, or would you like to support that in a motion?
Thought.
Uh-huh.
We're in the middle of also talking about extra money for LBCC that would be in addition to this $34 million. And it has come to my attention that it's quite possible that we're going to be having higher expenses for fire and police stations than the thought was given before. While I support the $34 million, I guess I don't want there to be any, well, we may need the money that they're talking about, needing for the fire and police stations, for the extra ask. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that's what it was.
Okay.
I would move adoption of the resolution presented by the mayor. Second.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carry. All right, and I will let them know about the resolution that we just passed. Okay, business from the council, so Rich, do you have anything this evening?
The 150th anniversary time capsule is at my store. Most everything is in there that has been loaded in it and evacuated, so there's still some room in it. I have asked for and have not yet received any information about having an annual from both high schools in a paperback version, so we're not dealing with an extra quarter-inch of material. I have not heard yet back from anybody.
Do they still do annuals?
Yeah. I mean, you know, you don't think the annual companies are going to give up on that venue string, or that money string?
Technology, the way it is, I didn't know.
Anyway, if anyone has, there's going to be some space left in the top. So it's going to be a space about four inches by two inches by 12 inches. And that can be things that are solid, it can't be any paper or plastic, but if you have solid things that can go in there, there can't be anything that if you evacuate it, they would explode like a cellphone. But there's that much left, that much space left, I guess I'll get my mix all messed up, that we can put stuff in. So if someone has something that is of a historic, or would be of a historic nature in 50 years, there's still, we're going to have about two weeks before I'll get the top back from Janos, having it etched, and then I'll put it together and seal it up. Then we'll have to decide where to put it. So ahead.
Great. Maybe we could get a patch from one of the Boy Scouts. Is there any sort of symbol, or do you guys have anything that can go on the time capsule?
There's room for that, but we want stuff other than something that could possibly burn.
Okay.
Because you're going to have 10,000 degrees about this far away, and I need to have something in between.
That wouldn't burn. Okay.
Maybe an asbestos patch.
Asbestos? Really? Be careful, be careful making jokes in meetings. People take them all kinds of ways.
Oh, how funny. Okay, we'll think on that one. Anything else, Rich?
No, that's it.
Right, Ray? Yep, Floyd?
No, thank you.
Bessie?
Just one thing, last night after the candidates' forum, there's a lady in the audience gave me a note, I thought I brought it with me, but it must have not, and it was just a concern she had, and I'm not exactly sure if this would be on Catlin or who, but it's about the old museum downtown.
She gave me a note too.
Okay, that if we could make it look, it does look pretty shabby, is what she was saying, and so...
Right. She handed me the same note, and I think I'll just, I'll just talk to the museum and kind of just, you know, forward her concern to them.
Yeah.
We don't really have much say how they do their operations, but it's a total separate nonprofit.
That's what I thought too, but I thought I'd bring it up in case somebody knew something about it.
Yeah, so I'll just forward that off to the museum, but no, thanks, yeah.
That's all.
Okay, all right, Bill?
Wes, any news on the Albany Box Company issue?
Yes, we've just agreed to pay the invoices, and I believe the check is in the mail.
Oh, okay.
Or close. It's in the process.
I was, I had talked to the owner, and so I was aware of the situation, and I was copying on the email when he said, what's the status or the next meeting and so forth, so I was curious, so glad to hear it's resolved.
Well, yeah, the most recent, and to clarify, I'd gotten an email from responding to that, I think the same email that you saw from Chris Bailey, our operations manager, who said that the check was being processed, and that was a couple of days ago, so I'm assuming it's close to being issued if it hasn't already been sent.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Dick? Okay. I didn't have anything this evening, but I would really like to know, would our two Boy Scouts like to come forward to the podium? So...
Doesn't look like it.
Yeah, I'm putting you on the spot. So all of our council meetings are actually live on the internet right now, and also they're on TV. You can watch at 7:00 on Channel 28, and I think it's, what, 23 for North Albany, 7:00 every evening. So now that the two of you are standing here, you'll be able to watch that on TV. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
No.
No.
(laughing).
I'm Cody Rogers.
I'm Matthew Rogers.
And how many years have you been with the Boy Scouts, or Cub Scouts too, before?
I've been in for about five years now.
Wow. Uh-huh. And how many?
I've been in about three.
Oh, that's wonderful. So I'd like to know, probably all of us, what do you like about Albany? Anything come to your mind? What's your favorite thing in Albany? What's your favorite thing in Albany?
Recession.
Anything come to your mind?
Give them a break, Mayor.
I know, I know. So what do you don't like about Albany, anything?
Being asked questions on TV.
I've got a question.
Oh, you've got a question.
So are you here to work on a part of a merit badge, is that what the attendance is for?
Yeah, we're here working on the communications merit badge.
Good, yeah. So Norman, this is a very short meeting compared to normal. Sometimes we're here for many hours, so you are really lucky not coming tonight because you're not having to sit through hours of a meeting, so, yeah. But anything, you have questions of us at all?
You got any questions, Matthew?
Nope.
Mayor, I have one question. What rank, and are you aiming to get your Eagle?
So right now, I'm first class, and yes, I am aiming to get Eagle, and-
Matthew?
I am second class, and I am aiming to get Eagle.
Good.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Good for you.
That's great. So, well, we want to thank you for attending, and if you have any questions over city government, you're welcome to contact us and be glad to sit down and meet with you and let you all know, tell you everything about city government, so, all right, thank you. I really picked you on the spot, yes, they did well. Part of their communications, they can really be able to write up a report that, boy, they did communicate to us. Okay, with that, Wes, do you have anything?
I believe Mark has a couple of issues he wants to-
Okay, all right.
So the city's contracting rules and regulations require staff to bring back any contract changes that exceed 10% of the original contract, and we do that on a regular basis. And as you know, there are times we bring these change orders to you somewhat after the fact, just because of the process, as we're dealing with construction, getting the numbers may lag actually doing some of the work. We have one project, the Vine Street Canal Bank Repair Project, which you approved the contract back in September. There's been some changes that have had to happen with the design regarding soils that have been encountered, and we are, we're quite sure the changes as a result of that will exceed the 10%. Now, there may be some other savings on the project that will offset that and bring us below 10%, but I can't say that right now. So staff has a choice. We could shut the project down and come to council and get authorization to move forward. The issues with that is we'll incur additional costs with downtime with the contractor. The project will be expanded, which means it'll take longer for us to get the canal up and running and start generating electricity and therefore funds. And so while we will bring back a change order at the earliest date possible, I did want to let you know about that and just generally get a head nod that you're okay with that process. If you're not, then we will inform the contractor that he needs to stop work until we can get this in front of the body for approval.
How many dollars?
Well, the max, 10% would be $26,600. This change is probably in excess of $35,000. Again, there's some offsetting costs, or I'm sorry, offsetting savings, but I, right now, I can't guess if we're going to get below 26,600 or not.
So Mark, I do remember when we did award this bid, and I can't remember the contractor, but he seemed quite low for what was actually anticipated or other bidders.
Yeah.
So is this extra because of unforeseen costs that the contractor didn't see, or is it strictly because of the actual project?
This is an actual design change. There was concern, I remember, on council's part on, you know, the contractor and his ability to do the work at that price. The details are, for this wall stabilization, we have what are these big beams, soldier piles, that are going down along the canal banks, and those are held back at the top by the soil reinforcement or these anchors that the design was to drive those anchors into the soil. Well, the soil is so tough that they can't get those driven deep enough to provide the overturning moment, and they need to do some drilling. It's a different process, a different subcontractor, so it's not a issue where the contractor's not performing, it is a change of condition out there.
Okay.
We have the funds in reserves that would come out of reserves, is that something we have to go out and do some additional funding for?
We do have the funds in reserve.
Okay. All right, so you want, just to go ahead and give-
I wanted to make sure you knew, you know, we do our best to get these change orders to you as quickly as possible. I think in this case, since we're pretty sure we're going to go over, and we think it's going to be a smaller impact if we can move forward now without getting the official change order for council approval, I wanted to let you know about that, and if you have concerns, we can delay the project and work through the process.
It would actually be better if there were a motion that would approve exceeding the 10%, subject to staff bringing back the change order at a later date. Otherwise, technically, we don't have the authority to do that, so-
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And there's a second, okay. Any discussion?
Do we need to put a limit on what that change order may be?
You're going to have to pay it anyway, quite frankly, because under the law, if it's an unforeseen soil circumstance like this, we have no alternative other than not go forward with the project, and you're already in the middle of the project. So practically speaking, there's not much alternative but to get it finished.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And your second item you had?
I think that was it.
Oh, that was it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And nothing, staff, have anything? Okay. We have a work session November 3rd, and regular session is November 5th, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Thanks, Rick.